A few years back, it's all US, it's all US London.
Oh, is that?
Yes, that's why. It's called weather out. Yeah, yeah, I'm like, yeah. I had this right off the bat. Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not trying to either.
I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's common council meeting for the city of Port Jervis. We're going to start with the pledge of allegiance, and I ask that following the pledge of allegiance, we take a brief moment of silence in memory of Tom Owen, a former DPW employee who had recently passed away. To help us with the pledge tonight is Anthony Mobley of Act 67, Jonathan Weiss of Troop 68, and Casey Douglas of Troop 550-3.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started tonight, just one item of business we need to take care of. Due to the advertising of the public hearings that were scheduled for tonight, those public hearings actually weren't advertised until being on December 8th. So based upon that, I would entertain two separate motions. The first, to reschedule the public hearing on Local Law Number 13. Do I have a motion?
So moved to second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. And I would entertain a second motion for the budget to move that public hearing to December 8th.
So moved to second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Bell. All right. Mr. Conklin cannot be here for the youth report this evening, so I will be taking care of that. He wanted us all to know that tomorrow there's a half day for all Port Jervis school students. The high school and the middle school dismiss at 10 o'clock, and ASK and HBE dismiss at 11:00. All Port Jervis schools are closed from Wednesday to Friday this week for Thanksgiving break. Six fall varsity teams qualified for the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Team Scholar-Athlete Awards. Teams with a grade point average of 90% or higher receive a certificate for the school, and each student athlete receives a pin for their achievement. The six fall sports to be named to this honor are Boys Cross Country with a 95.1 team GPA, Girls Volleyball with a 93.84 team GPA, Girls Cross Country with a 93.29 team GPA, Boys Soccer with a 90.92 team GPA, Football with a 90.88 team GPA, and Girls Soccer with a 90.18 team GPA. So congratulations to all of the athletes on those teams. At the High School Financial Aid Scholarship Night is Thursday, December 4th, at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. All seniors who will be going to college and their parents should attend this important session. It's time once again for the Student Council Blood Drive on December 10th. This holiday time of year, the need for blood significantly increases. Please consider donating blood and sign up for a time slot with the wonderful ladies in the main office. Everyone who signs up and follows through with the screening process on the 10th will receive a free T-shirt. Thank you for sharing the most precious gift of all that only you can give, the gift of life. Middle School is selling reusable tote bags. They measure 15 inches high by 13 inches wide by 10 inches deep. The bag is red with black and white PJ design on one side. These are for sale in the Port Jervis Middle School main office and at the Kris Kendall Market downtown in Port Jervis on November 30. ASK students collected canned food for the community. ASK has collected 1,930 items of food for the local Salvation Army. The two classes that collected the most cans were Mr. Fisher's class, 339 items collected, and Mrs. Wollagrowski with 112 items collected. The waiting-to classes will be rewarded with an extra period of PDE to come up. Hamilton Bicentennial Elementary School will be holding a Stuff the Bus event to collect non-perishable food items to benefit the Backpack Snack Attack program. This event will be held in the parking lot during November parent-teacher conferences. They will be accepting donations from 9:00 AM to 2:30 PM at HBE on Tuesday, November 25th as well. Examples of items that they are collecting are juice boxes, Jell-O fruit cups, pudding cups, individually wrapped snacks, oatmeal packages, non-refrigerated milk, microwavable soups, Chef Boyardee microwavable cups, small boxes of cereal, ramen noodle cups, mixed fruit cups, and apples mix cups. Together, we can make a difference in the lives of these students at the school. Thank you for supporting the efforts of HBE Backpack Snack Attack Program. That was all for the youth report. Is there a seniors' report, Mr. Siegel?
Thank you. The senior club had an enjoyable excursion to West Point's Eisenhower Hall on Sunday afternoon, November 10th, to see Anything Goes. The show was enjoyed by a full busload of members. At the November 13th meeting, the following members were elected for office: Judy Gray President, Marion Campbell Vice President, Mary Stevens Secretary, and Alice Pagano as Treasurer. The board will be installed in January. The Gona-Free of Honor Free Finance spoke to the members on financial issues, and it was very informative. To close out the year, our holiday luncheon will be at Bolge's on 11th of December. Members always enjoy this event. We hope to start the year with new members and plans for another successful year. Meetings are held on the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month at the Farnham House of Port Jervis by Sue DeJohn Amso. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to open the podium to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak will have five minutes to speak about any topic. Please state your name and the ward in which you live.
Joe Curtis, Second Ward. This is a reference to Mr. Kutcher's unfortunate death. 30 years ago, I had a brother who was a sergeant in the Port Jervis Police Department. There were 12 or 13 guys and three cars. Now, this day and age, there's, I believe, there's over 30 policemen, and there's upwards of 20 cars. Whatever happened to Port Jervis? I blame a lot of the situation in Port Jervis on absentee landlords. What is this council's intentions to overcome the situation that we're experiencing right now in Port Jervis? Thank you.
Hi, Seamus Doney, Ward 2. I'd just like to piggyback a little bit on what Mr. Curtis said. I have a business downtown. I was only, you know, it's a block from where Kutcher's was, and my wife actually was supposed to go there that day with my son, my three-year-old son. They have a pair of shoes that are there now. I think that what I'd like to know, and I think a lot of people would, is that there's a plan in place to, you know, avoid this from happening again. Blaming the police force, I never would do that. It's fantastic that they caught the guy that did it right away. I think what we would like to see, more police presence in the downtown area. It's supposed to be the main area in town, and if there's ever going to be any hopes of a revival of that area, it certainly has to be kept safe, especially in the middle of the day. Personally, I'd just like to know that there is a plan in place. We have seen some more police presence down there since this happened, but I'd like to be for sure that that was going to continue from this point forward in how we're going to prevent this from happening again. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name's Anne Horsham, resident here. I'm also representing the Port Jervis Council of Community Agencies tonight. We had a meeting last week about what I'm going to talk about. That's a meeting of human service representatives. We meet every other month on a third Wednesday. We are a little dismayed and really want clarification about the vote that was taken by the council, I guess now two weeks ago. The vote to close the DSS and the probation departments in Port Jervis. We discussed, like 10 years ago, the county removed the services from Port Jervis, the DSS services. They did that 10 years ago, leaving in place employment and training. There's two employees there on Pike Street, and that's not a department that you'd want to lose that's helping put people back to work. And also, that office, those two employees, not only help people re-enter the job force, they also are like a bridge for folks in the community, you know, helping to access, helping either inter-office mail. There's things that they do because 10 years ago, basically, the services were removed. The county already did that. They threw them away 10 years ago. So that was just kind of confusing to read that, that you're going to close the Department of Social Services, especially with employment and training in there. The probation department, I believe that you'd be moving, or the county, I believe you're suggesting to the county to move the probation department. It'll just be Middletown and Newburgh, so the probation officers here in Port Jervis would be relocated to Middletown, relocated to Newburgh. There's about 400 to 500 people involved with the probation department. So I know that your plan was that let them take the bus to the site that they would see their probation officer. And how, we feel like this is removing the local supervision of these folks. I don't think that benefits our community. I think they're a real asset to this community, to, you know, the eyes and ears locally for those folks that are involved with that program. So also, the Orange County Department, they have a lease on that building till 2022, so they still have to pay the rent till 2022. You know, the social services, there's only the two employees there. Everything else was taken away. Probation, we see that as just making it harder for people that need to go see their probation officer. It's putting barriers, more barriers, and I think that there's, it's, the percentage of them getting to their probation officer. I think I read it somewhere, that, you know, it's hard enough, they need to get to their probation officer. Now they're going to have to travel to get there. So we don't know where the savings are in this proposal. Where are the savings? Where's the benefit to this community? When the Department of Motor Vehicle was on the, you know, everyone was afraid, nobody wants to lose the Department of Motor Vehicle. People with transportation don't want to lose it. People without transportation don't want to lose it, you know, to get your ID there, you know? We don't want to lose Department of Motor Vehicle. But I know there was lots of discussion when that was on the chopping block. I saw it on Facebook. Everybody was like, come, you know, give your input. We're going to lose this if you don't get your input in. And this decision was made, like, people were all shocked, like, wow! Well, like, it seemed overnight that this, and there was no asking of input, you know, and there's plenty of people that, you know, would have been involved in that conversation. So we just don't understand. Where's the savings? Where's the benefit? What is this going to do for the community? We'd really like to hear that discussion, you know? We did not hear it here. And I think that, I think, I'm just going to take one moment to look at my notes and make sure that I said everything I wanted to say before I sat down. I think that's it. Just thank you very much. And please, talk to us.
I've been following Annie, same thing on Cameron, so I guess you're actually living here now, but I'm a volunteer over in Port Jervis. A lot of volunteers are working. Ready?
Yes.
And also, quick introduction. I watched a meeting like two weeks ago on Channel 23, and when I heard about this letter being sent to the county, I was in shock, written down something, so just missed it. At the last city council meeting, a resolution was passed requesting that the county close what is left of the DSS office, as well as the local probation department. The actual decision was made during closed executive meeting, and the community found out about it when the letter was voted on to be sent to the county executive and made public record. The federal, excuse me, the federal poverty guidelines for the 48 connected states for a family of three is $19,790. The Port Jervis poverty rate is over 18% as of September of this year. I got that from the state's website. That's almost 20%. That means one out of every five people in this community live in poverty. Port Jervis is nearly double the county's rate, that is roughly 10% for the entire county. Instead of yielding to the county executives' demand for cuts, the elected officials of this town should be demanding that the DSS office be brought back to the fully functional center it was 10 years ago with numbers like this. Okay, as for the probation department, it depends on who you're talking to, the numbers vary. Probationers are between 450 to 550. Probation officers range from 5 to 10, depending on who you're talking to and who you're asking. Annie said four earlier. The only number that seems to be even close to being consistent is that there are a little over 170 felons. Even using the lowest number of 140 on probation and the highest 10 officers, that's 45 people per officer. Probation provides the direct contact needed to dissuade reoffending, as well as giving a hand up for someone who made a mistake becoming a productive member of society. Using that logic, I'm sorry to say that it would be the same as saying, let's get rid of the police department because if there were no arrests, crime would happen. And also, there's been some talk about the closure of the mental health clinic. Mayor Decker may have said on Facebook that there's no plans to do so, yet the meeting two weeks ago tells a different tale. During the reading of the letter to be sent to the county executive, someone from the days in the middle of the reading of the letter asked, what about mental health from that side of the, would you like to say who had actually asked the question or not? Okay, well, catch your words, George, I understand. Okay, Mayor Decker's answer was not that it's off the table. What he said was that would have to be handled through the Health Department. Well, the clinic in town services over 750 clients right now, and by the first of the year, they expect that number to be over 800. No matter when these recommendations were decided behind closed doors, the release is not a good or worse time. Two weeks ago today, at 2:30 PM, there was a press conference right in this room that announced the apprehension of Dennis McBee. Yes, McBee is a villain in the literal meaning. He sensibly murdered one of our town's most beloved citizens, as well as driving a wedge between several groups in our community. The one in five that live in poverty and the nearly 10% in the Udelikey Clinic feel that they are being punished because of the act of one man, and that is from more than one source of people, from, that work with people in these groups in this town that I have talked to over the past two weeks.
If that admires?
Thank you. Others may feel that the decision was impromptu. The letter was made public only at a time when our community was distracted by a great tragedy. I personally hope it was just bad timing. It may have been wedge, but intentional or not, the city government seems to be the sledgehammer that hit it. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. Lorraine Marcus, Third Ward, 12. I just heard a lot of stuff, and I'm going to throw in my two cents from the working taxpaying crowd. Currently, when my husband and I review his paycheck, between mandated healthcare costs and taxes, 50% of his paycheck is taken away before he even gets a chance to put his hands on it. That's not including the MTA tax that we all pay, our property taxes, and all the other taxes, our user fees with Orange and Romkin and whatnot. So I'm going to say that we're hovering right around 60%. Government has grown thick, very, very thick, to the point of where we can no longer afford the enormity of the size of government. And in order to bring things back into proper perspective, unfortunately, everybody is going to have to feel a little bit of discomfort. Departments will be cut. A lot of services that were once handled by the churches are now being handled by government thanks to the 501(c)(3) that was passed by Lyndon Johnson when he was a US senator back in 1954 and signed into law under the Eisenhower administration. So if we could strike away at that IRS code, that would open up the floodgates, putting the churches back where they were once before, taking care of unwood mothers, orphans, and people needing that hand up in society. And everything was taken care of quite well by the communities back then. So I understand that there is a need. Unfortunately, somewhere or another, the buck has to suck. How much more do we have to pay for all of these different obligations? 60% of which are is way, way too high, way, way too high. And that's just speaking from somebody working for a company. What about the business owner? And all their tax obligations, their property taxes in Port Jervis, community tax, not only in Port Jervis, but any other places, is exponentially higher than the residential rate. And not to mention what they have to pay out between taxes and everything. So a lot of these home, small business owners don't even cut a page up for themselves. They're just existing with their business, providing a service for the community. So I think that we all just need to embrace the fact of that. Somewhere along the line, cuts have to be made, and if Port Jervis is ever going to come up to the point where we have jobs again, the scope and size of government needs to definitely be toned back and all, and taxes need to come down for the business community so they can invest into businesses and provide those jobs. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Moving on. Yeah? I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the November 10th common council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. We'll move on to committee reports, finance and insurance. Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Revoso. First of all, I'd like to make a motion to approve the finance committee meeting from October, October's meeting.
Motion by Mr. Bell, second by Mr. Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Absolutely. Any abstentions?
The next finance committee meeting will be on December the 18th at 6:00 PM, and the third budget meeting will be December the 4th here in the chambers at 6:00 PM.
Is that all, Mr. Bell?
No. I wish it was. Now we've got to do the bills. One of the larger bills from the general water fund. City of Port Jervis Trust Agency transfer of cash to tax sale, $512,832.01. State Insurance Fund for workers' compensation, $24,938.36. New York State Employees Health Insurance, $153,526.79. Orange County Landfill for city waste for the month of October, $16,490.05. From the Capital Fund, WM Schultz Construction Incorporated for water treatment clarifier, Dick's Concrete for the salt shed, $5,240. The totals from the general fund, $734,793.29. From the water fund, $30,856.58. And from the capital fund, $365,997.28. For a total of $1,131,647.15, I'm making a motion to pay the bills.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Bell, second by Mr. Ritchie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Abstentions? Carried.
And that's all, Mr. Revoso.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Fire and Emergency Management, Mr. Wollagrowski.
Thank you, Mr. Revoso. Just a couple of things. The dear Mayor Decker and the members of the city council, it is hereby requested that the below-named person be approved for their active membership, a junior, into the Port Jervis Fire Department Company stated. Christopher Kloon for Excelsior Engine Company, Number 5. The members of the Board of Officers in the Port Jervis Fire Department approved this application on November 3rd, and by the firefighter's company stated on the individual's application. I'd like to make that a motion to accept the application for Christopher Kloon.
Motion by Mr. Wollagrowski, second by Mr. Siegel. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Abstentions? Carried.
The only other thing I have is the ladder truck was brought back this weekend from its trip down to Pennsylvania to do some final punch list items, so to say. Chief Rhodes said he'll give us an update just to confirm that everything has been done, but as far as we know right now, all the bugs have been worked out. The only other thing I have, December 15th will be the next fire and emergency management meeting, which will be following DPW meeting. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wollagrowski. Code and Legislative, Mr. Siegel.
Thank you, Mr. Revoso. The last Code and Legislative meeting was held on November the 5th. We're moving the meeting back to 7:00 PM as it was before. So the regular scheduled meeting next is Wednesday, December the 3rd at 7:00 right here in the council chambers. I'd just like to, I'm sorry that Mr. Curtis left. I'd just like to address a couple, one of his points there. Codes Department and the Buildings Department, the Codes Committee and Buildings Department are going to aggressively take action against landlords that do not provide proper housing for their tenants. They're going to clean up their act. We're going to assure that they clean up their act. And people that live in housing in City of Port Jervis deserve proper housing, clean housing, housing that they can perform properly in. And we have several laws on the books that will help us enforce those laws. There's the abandoned and vacant property law, which will probably be pursued aggressively starting January 1. There's a couple other laws, and we're going to add some more to make. There's a couple other laws, and we're going to add some more to make the landlords perform properly. We have some landlords, mostly absentee landlords, that buy a house, do nothing to the house.